I want to welcome all of you to St. Cloud Area Chamber of Commerce. My name is Teresa Bonin and I'm president of the chamber. I know most of you. I want to welcome our city council candidates who are here with us this morning. And I'll be the moderator for this candidate forum for the St. Cloud City Council. So joining us today at the chamber, you can see him up there is Buddy King. And we also have George Hantos on Zoom and Hassan Yusuf. Hassan, thank you for joining us. I believe Carol Lewis is going to join us. I know she has to leave right at nine o'clock for a meeting. And I thought Jeff Gerger was going to join us as well. But I don't see him here yet today. Natalia Garatha was planning to join us when she thought it was at eight o'clock at night. She can't participate at eight in the morning because she needed to be at work. So I will be getting written questions to her and we will be recording this and posting it on our website. So that people can view it through Election Day. And we'll be posting Natalia's responses for her to those to those written questions. And they'll be the same questions you all are getting today. So the purpose of this this forum is to make candidates more accessible to voters and provide a forum for participation and feedback in the political process. So here's how that we're gonna do it today. This is the format. I've got some questions prepared for the candidates' opinions on the city of St. Cloud issues that are important to business. I would invite you, if you have a specific question, to put it in the chat and we'll get to them as time allows. Also, if time doesn't allow us to get individually to candidates on questions, please reach out to them. They've all got information on their Facebook pages as well as some have regular candidate pages. And I'm sure that they will respond to you or you can certainly reach out to them this morning through chat as well. Candidates will be allowed up to two minutes to address each question. And we may also allow rebuttal if any individual candidate is called out in a response. Our chamber staff member in the studio, Laura Wagner, is our timekeeper today. Laura? Hello. We were gonna have a tone. We were going to have a tone, but I found out Tuesday at a forum I did, tones aren't picked up real well on Zoom unless somebody's talking. So I asked Laura just to say time at the end of two minutes. And when you hear that, I would ask you just to finish your statement and then we'll go on to the next speaker. Also, if you aren't speaking, please mute your please mute your your device because it interrupts and especially on speaker view, it goes back and forth. So mute your device if you aren't speaking. Okay, Laura, just say time so they can hear you.
Time.
That's Laura. Thank you. So we're gonna start today and Buddy, I'm gonna start this with you. We know some of you better than others and we'd like to hear just a little about each of you. So tell us who you are and why you're running for city council. Buddy, you want to start?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Teresa. And thank you, everyone, for telling me this morning. My name is Buddy King and I have been a resident of St. Cloud for about eighteen years now. And I am interested and have a strong passion for youth. I have a strong passion for diversity and a strong passion for just bringing a community together. And one of the things that I decided, I have been working with the nonprofit up here in St. Cloud with Boys and Girls Club for over eighteen years. And the work that I did, the work I was able to accomplish, just kind of helped drive me into where I'm at today. So I'm running for city council because there are places and pieces that I want to see better. I want to see a more attractive downtown. I want to see a place that brings people together. I want to see a city that embraces diversity and shows diversity in every element that that is offered. So that's why I'm running for St. Cloud, to just get at the table, have these conversations. And let's reimagine what an attractive place that we call home could look like.
Great, thank you. George, why are you continuing to run? You're incumbent. You've been there for how many years now?
It's a good question. And I have a good answer, other than I've been encouraged by a number of people to stay on because they appreciate my voice on the council. I've been on the council since 2001. You want me to continue about a little about me or?
Yes, please.
Okay, well, I've lived in St. Cloud for over forty-one years. I owned and operated Hemp Sinks Deli downtown for eighteen years and successfully sold it. And then I went to work at Quiet Oaks Hospice House for four years as part of the management team developing operational procedures. And as a house manager, oversaw an eight-bed facility. And then I retired in 2012. I've served on the YMCA Board, the St. John's Boys Choir Board, and this Chamber of Commerce Board for several years. I've also served on the St. Cloud Airport Advisory Board, the Paramount's Art Board, the City Council Financial Policies Committee, the Board of Appeals, the Zoning Board, the Regional Rail Authority. And for the last nine years or so, I've been a commissioner on the HRA Housing and Rehab Authority. I have a number of major accomplishments that, but I'll only touch on one here in the intro. About eight years ago, I helped, I initiated actually, the reorganization of the Housing and Rehab Authority, who at the time directed all the city's economic development activities. My efforts moved the cities, moved the economic development activities to the city hall, creating the current Economic Development Authority, the EDA, and allowing the HRA to focus on housing-related matters. This reorganization ultimately led to the creation of the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation. The expectation was that the city would be a more efficient, one-stop-shop for economic development activities. And the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation became a private sector initiative not led by the public sector. And the HRA would be able to focus more on their housing, which led them to being a high achiever under thank you.
You can finish your sentence, George.
I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be different than our national leaders.
Aren't we all? Aren't we all? All right, we'll go to Hassan. Hassan, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for city council, please? Oh, you're muted. We need you to unmute.
Thank you so much, Teresa, and thank you so much, the champ for allowing me this opportunity to present myself to the resident of St. Cloud. My name is Hassan Yusuf. I came to St. Cloud in 2001, the same time that my friend George Hantos was starting to be the council. So I have been here since 2001. I taught at Tech High School. And I taught at Lincoln Elementary School and also taught at the Intensive English Center at St. Cloud State. And I have been part of this community for a long time. I am about to join the United Way Board of Directors soon. And I was also the Board of Directors at LEAF, an organization that helps with the achievement gap and education in St. Cloud. When there was a trouble at Tech High School and people, the students walk out and there was some disturbance and some riots, I was there. And I was selected as the president of a task force that brought the community and the teachers and the administration together to solve the problem. And we were able to achieve a lot. In that task force, we had the superintendent as a member. We had some board members there. We had some students and community members there. So I was the president of that task force that brought our city together. So if I'm at the council, I can bring that kind of leadership that brings people of different background, different experiences together. I'm also a board member of Feeding Area Children Together, an organization, a small organization that is dedicated to making sure that our children are not hungry on the weekend when they go home. So we put food in their bags and we make sure that they have enough food on the weekend when the schools are closed. And those students depend on the schools for their lunch and breakfast. So we make sure that on the weekends, they are well taken care of. Also, I am a founder and a board member, former board member of Eagle Education.
That's okay. You can finish. Go ahead.
Eagle Education. So thank you so much. I really appreciate. I thank you so much.
Yeah, one thing, we've got plenty of time this morning. So again, I know I can be intimidating when she says time, but it's the only way we can kind of keep things moving. And we do have time for additional questions this morning. So if if audience members want to ask any questions, either submit them. If you're in the office, submit them to Laura or else you can put them in the chat. All right, so we'll go back and Hassan, we'll start with you this time. With the recent events, our public safety is on top of everyone's mind. What's your view of St. Cloud's Fire and Police Departments? And what's your approach to appropriately funding these important city departments in the future, particularly with the squeeze on city budgets that's been caused by COVID specifically? So Hassan, what do you think about Fire and Police?
Thank you so much. Fire and Police, they do tremendous work. They do sometimes very dangerous work. I personally have a criminal justice degree, so I understand the police procedures and how things work. And but we need to be realistic. We need to make sure our police are aware of the communities that they patrol, be members of the community that they engage with, establish real friendship between our communities and our and our police. I would suggest police walking, using bikes, for example, mingling with the communities before anything happens, before any disaster happens. So establishing relationship between the communities and the police so that we have a real relationship that when issues arise, our police are well-equipped to take care of. We know that about forty-two percent of our budget goes to the police and safety areas. And we need to understand that we need to make sure that our funds go to the right places. We need to fully fund the police, yes. But we also need to make sure that the police are not responding to welfare checks, for example, mental health issues, and so that our police understand what they do, only what they were trained to do, instead of doing mental issues, welfare checks. Those should be done by professional counselors, people who have mental expertise and social workers, so that our police can do fighting crime. And that's what I propose. So I will make sure that our police are funded. But I also want to fund mental health issues. Welfare checks should be done by experts so that our police have free hand dealing with issues that are disturbing our community. Thank you.
And then, okay, so I got a follow-up question on that. So if that's the case, how are those professionals paid? Are they paid through the city of St. Cloud or are they paid by the people who are getting the services?
I think I will make sure that some of them walk in the police department. So those will be paid by the the city of St. Cloud. So they walk directly with the police. They respond to calls together. And so they take the lead on those calls, but they are paid by the city of St. Cloud in collaboration with the police and everything. But also I will collaborate with the St. Anne's County and the state to make sure that we have enough funding to cover all those areas. So I will be working with both our state, our county, and even the federal level to make sure that we have funds that can take care of those issues so that the police do not respond to those. And sometimes innocent people are killed because the police are not trained to handle mental problems.
Thank you. Next, we've got Buddy. How, what do you think of St. Cloud's Fire and Police Department? How would you look at funding them in the future?
Well, thank you, Teresa, for that question. I have been lucky enough to be part of two community engagement with the police, police, St. Cloud Police here over the last eight years. Two programs that have proven to be very successful in its own right. One called POW, which is a program that the police department runs with the local communities around the Boys and Girls Club, where once or twice a week, they come out and engage with activities and do things such as sports, self-improvement, self-esteem building, just having fun with them, just being a kid, just creating and building those relationships. And then another program called Skylar, which is St. Cloud Youth Leadership Academy. And in this particular program, we take youth that are borderline and having somewhat some 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 choice-making decisions. And they take them and put them in a, take them to a, up north to Camp Ripley and spend a whole week with them. And and what is amazing is that you, they leave, they come in one way, but they leave another. And not only do they leave another way, they they create friendships with a whole group of kids that they did not know beforehand. And I have seen the success of this this accomplishment. I have seen how when you take these programs and as you allow years to go and as cops begin to engage with families and they become there's a greater understanding and a greater appreciation for community engagement. What's happening around the country is is terrifying. But I am, I am feeling really well and I feel really good about what we are doing here in St. Cloud. I believe what we are doing here in St. Cloud, we are creating a model that I believe most states or most cities should follow. It is, it is the work of our chief, our mayor, our commanders and administrations to continue to to work this program. Are there flaws? Are there still some out there that's not perfect? Probably so. But let's not, let's not do it like the rest of the world. Let's not take one bad apple and ruin the whole bunch. Thank you.
Thank you. And George, what are your views of St. Cloud's Fire and Police Departments and your approach for funding them in the future?
Well, I've always been a very strong supporter of our police and fire departments. And over the years, I've been on the council. One of the things that I've done is support them in the budget process, but also try to hold them accountable for how we spend public tax dollars. So I'm always trying to make sure that they use our tax dollars efficiently and effectively. It's interesting, when you look at the budget, the St. Cloud Police Department and the Fire Department are over $29 million in the next year's budget. And our total tax, property taxes that we collect are $27 million. So you can see that our tax, property taxes don't cover the, just those two things. Obviously, we get revenues from different places on a $125 million budget. But I am a strong supporter. I think St. Cloud has done a very good job. We don't have problems with excessive use of force. We don't have problems with de-escalating skills on occasion. And we need to be diligent and careful. We do have some racial profiling once in a while that comes up and we have to work on that to improve it. I think the city, as Buddy King mentioned, we do have a lot of community policing programs. We have the DARE program in the schools. We have a youth program where the chief puts on. We have what's called CAT, Community Action Team, that's already set up between the hospitals, social services. And I've been involved in a few of those situations where our police department has been called on these different community organizations to help alleviate an issue that may not be related to crime or violence, but related to behavior. And I think that's very good. We also have the CAP House that was obviously a very successful community initiative by our police department. So during the budget process this year, again, I stressed using our dollars efficiently and trying to find out if we can get more community-based policing programs implemented in the city's police department budget. So I think we're doing a good job. I think we're doing a good job and our fire department also needs to have some words of encouragement. We have a very good and strong fire department as well. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with George on this one. George. The city of St. Cloud's sales tax, food and beverage tax, and lodging taxes have all taken a pretty significant hit with COVID. I know I just saw the lodging, the most recent lodging tax dollars, and they're about fifty percent of what they were last year at this time. So as many of you know, the chamber contracts with the city to run the Convention and Visitors Bureau with a portion of the lodging tax. So it's very important to us as well. How do you propose to manage those big hits to those important taxes and continue the services that are funded by them? Will you increase property taxes, George?
Let's see, I, where am I? Oh, God, where, where am I? Something happened here.
Oh, oh, you know what? You need to just, you must have hit your little camera. So go down. There you go.
I'm sorry.
No problem. It's excitement. Zoom excitement this morning.
Yeah, I guess. Some of the issues you raised, I don't have an answer. I'm not sure anybody does. I mean, how do you, how do you recover from the loss of hotel food and beverage tax and hotel motel taxes? It's a very difficult thing. Now, one thing it has done is it has a potential stress on the city's tax levy budget. Because some of the bonds and some of the debt that we've incurred for some of our, like the MAC and other facilities, like the Rivers Edge Convention Center, we guarantee that at the city level. And that could put a stress on our property tax budget. But I, other than that, I really don't know how we could recover. You know, we just hope this thing moves on and we, it opens up soon. There are a lot of stresses and strains in our, if we just took our general tax levy budget, we are holding ourselves pretty well financially. But we have an exposure and the biggest hit, when the mayor talks about, you know, a $10 million hit, comes from our enterprise funds and those budgets, those revenues, like the food and beverage, hotel motel, and sales tax. And those are very difficult things to, you know, areas to to try to pick up and 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 recover from. But we do have to protect ourselves because we have a wonderful credit rating and we have good financial policies at the city. And we don't want to jeopardize that in terms of not getting some revenues from from those other areas where you're saying, you know, that are taking a hit. But I don't know how, I don't know that anybody has an answer for, you know, how do, how do you get the MAC back at full, you know, full bore? Or the convention center, you know, how do you have a wedding of a thousand people or a convention? I mean, we're just gonna have to weather the storm. And hopefully, you know, those enterprise funds and those budgets, you know, will have some staying power before this thing. Hopefully, it doesn't carry on more than the next twelve months or whatever. You know, I think we'll be okay in terms of surviving that. But if it goes on and on and on, you know, we could have some trouble because again, we we do have some debt that that the tax levy budget has to guarantee.
It's a tough question. I don't know that anyone has a clear answer, but it's important for us to talk about. Hassan, what are your opinions about those important enterprise fund taxes that are not being, they're, they're way below what past years have been in the important services that they fund? How do we continue to fund them?
Thank you so much. I personally had a coffee shop that I had to sell around March because of the the problem with COVID-19. So this issue affected the entire country. We are not alone. And as the virus goes down and the environment becomes safer, and I think at that time, we will be able to receive, I mean, continue what we used to do. And our economy will pick up eventually. But I think, like George, my friend said, it's a tough time for everyone. And we'll just have to work hard and make sure that our businesses are ready and able to cater for 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 the issues that are arising. And I think we need to lobby our our state and also federal level to make sure that if this issue continues, the stimulus and all those things cater for our businesses. But it's a tough issue and we understand and I think we will be there for us. Thank you.
And finally, Buddy, what are your opinions of of those lost revenues and how we make that up and keep the services that we have in place?
So that's a good question, Teresa. And I'm not exactly sure how to answer that as both have already spoken, but this is what I can say. COVID-19 has taught us how to be creative. COVID-19 has taught us how to think outside the box. It has, it has completely changed the world that we once knew. And and I would dare say that we will not ever see that world that we used to once live in. I think that as COVID, as we begin to try to somewhat manage it and figure out, then we will also begin to figure out, how can we open up places? How can we get businesses back to a place where they can be 100%? How can we get our convention center moving and getting, getting business back through, bringing, bringing people back to our economy, spending money, doing the things that we needed to do so that we can support the programs that's already in place? I'm not sure if this can even be answered within the next year. We just really don't know. I think instead of waiting for COVID to find its way around out, I think it's time for us to be the the human beings that we are and really be thinking about, how can we get in front of this thing? How can we create the business? So maybe we don't have a thousand people, but what can we do where we can equal something like a thousand? How can we utilize technology as a way to help us, as a way to promote? What other things can we do? And I believe that's, those are the questions, those are the tough questions that needs to be asked. Those are the tough questions that need to be answered. And it's just time to be innovative. It's time to just not think about traditional ways of doing things. But how can we create a brand-new world and what does that really look like?
Thank you. Excuse me. I want to go to specifically downtown. We see downtown continue to lose, lose tenants. You know, the buildings, we had some really great things going on in the buildings. And now we've got some definite holes. We've got a really big spot where the press bar used to be. Just a lot of issues around downtown. So how can we help rebuild downtown? And what do you think the city's responsibility in funding that rebuilding is? And I think we'll start this one. Buddy, why don't you give that one a try to to begin?
Thank you. Downtown revitalization. I love it. That is what it is about. I think that when you look, imagine a place, imagine a place where this young, this young man comes downtown to St. Cloud, Minnesota. And while he's downtown, he visits the new great Rivers Children's Museum. And him and his family, and they're in there, him and his dad, and they're having the time of their life. And they spend three good hours in there. And they leave, they leave from the Children's Museum and they begin to walk more towards the downtown. And look, they walk into a restaurant where they can sit down and enjoy time just as a family. And then mom and dad decided that, you know what, let's go, let's go do some entertaining. And they go find another source of entertainment. There is so much opportunity when you think about it downtown. Downtown is supposed to be the center attraction of your city. It is supposed to be the heartbeat of the city. If you look at any major city that has any major attractions, if you would look in their downtown, you would find that's where it starts. We have opportunity here. Our downtown is not that bad. Just a little bit of work, just a little bit of love, just to bring in some businesses, to bring in some attractions. I, I believe that the downtown, I just recently found out that people spend a whole day in St. Cloud. They make a whole day out of it. I didn't know that, right? And when you think about that, you mean to tell me that when we did have conventions, when it was things going on, people would come into downtown, they would go to the convention center, they would do their business. And then after that, they are forced to make two decisions on either food or entertainment. They don't have options. They don't have diversity. How do we get more residents downtown? How do we get more diverse businesses downtown, right? And when I say diverse, I'm not talking necessarily racial. But how do we get a diverse variety of specialty shops, necessity shops? How do we get these things down here? How do we make parking more affordable? What, how, I live in St. Cloud. I want to come downtown. Right now, I have no reason to come downtown until the Children's Museum comes. I have no reason to come downtown. Now, once we come downtown, we come down for a special reason and then we leave. We need to recreate that. We need to recreate that. We need to rethink about a place where when I come downtown, when I see the farmer's market, that might be my first spot. But then there's four or five other places that I can go as a family. And I'm not, and the entertainment life is not just for college students. But adults can come down, listen to some live music, eat some good food, and have a great time, dress up whatever it is that they feel they want to do and not feel like you have to be around a bunch of college kids, not saying nothing against college kids. But just, you know, the opportunity to have an adult-like entertainment spot. That's what I believe our downtown should be like. Thank you for that time.
You bet. Thank you. George, what are you thinking about downtown right now?
No, I'm thinking, I wish No, I'm thinking I wish it was better than what it is. That's really wish, what I would like to see. But as people might know, I had a downtown deli for over 18 years. I was strongly involved in the activities of downtown for many years, helped raise some funds to do a special study and just been a strong advocate for downtown. One of the things we can do on the government side is make sure we are business friendly. We have to make sure that City Hall is responsive and, and in terms of issuing permits, working with the private sector and be a true partner and making sure that all the obstacles from that end are constantly and regularly taken care of. And once in a while, we hear some horror stories that come out of City Hall about how the length of time to get a permit or, or some of the regulations and stuff. So, so I think we could constantly be working on improving our relationship. And I'm not saying it's a bad one. I think we have, we have a good one with the private sector. But at the same time, we have to be diligent again and make sure that, that those issues don't get in the way of people wanting to open up storefronts and do business downtown. You know, the other thing is that when you look at the, the city, we have invested quite a bit of money in downtown. So I don't think you can, anybody can point the finger at the city and say that we haven't done our share from parking ramps to, to landscaping issues, to infrastructure. Over the years, I think we've done a, you know, our share from the public sector side of it. And then finally, you know, I think what, what, well, there's a couple of points. We have to, we have to allow the private sector to determine if there's a market. And, and we can't make that. We could be helpful partner, as I said. But the private sector has to take the initiative. They, they're the ones that open the storefronts. They're the ones that bring in the business and we have to be ready and, and a good partner. But it's a private sector. And, and the final thing I would say is that we have to be realistic of who we are. And in St. Cloud, when we have 68% of the median household income on a state, from the state average, and we have 23% poverty levels and we have 60-some percent in free and reduced lunch programs, we have to realize who we are as a community and not have unrealistic expectations. We are who we are and, you know, we have to work within that framework. But from the city's standpoint, we have to be a good partner. And hopefully the private sector sees there's a market for, for our town in downtown or other places. But, but I think we've done a pretty good job in terms of the public sector trying to make sure that the infrastructure downtown is, is, is some, is, is good, well, and prepared for private sector initiatives.
I understand Michelle in the audience has followed a question to that. But let's go to, let's go to Hassan first and then we'll circle back to Michelle's question. Hassan, what, what's your perspective of downtown and what the city should be doing to build downtown?
Thank you so much. I think it's true that downtown has been neglected. To me, the way it looks like, it's like a ghost house, town. It's empty many places. There is no many people coming there because there is no essential shopping areas or other services that people come there for. So I think it will be very good if the city will partner with the private sector and come up with initiatives that will vibrate our downtown area. So we cannot just say that this is a private sector issue. I think we need to collaborate with the private sector. We need to establish an advisory committee on economics that can look at downtown and how to tackle the issue of downtown, because downtown is essential in, in every city. And people come to downtown for only government services, then they have to leave. So we need to give the people incentives to open businesses there. When I was opening my coffee shop, it took me almost seven months to finalize things because it was very hard getting permits. It was very difficult, tedious procedures. And I think also in the, in these city council, city areas where you go for permits, we need to have people who understand the vast background of many different people so that when people come there for services, they're able to interact and understand and get things that they need. So I think it will be a great idea if we can come up with plans to make sure that our downtown has essential areas that people come in, whether it's entertainment or food or, or other things, hotels. I think we need to make sure that we work together to make sure downtown is welcoming. But that's not the case now and we cannot leave it at that way. So we have to have a plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michelle, what's your question?
So my follow-up question is the lease rates downtown for commercial space are about 40% of every other area in the city, 40% higher for commercial leases. So that means that if I'm going to start a shop or I'm going to open a restaurant or I want to move my office, as I'm currently looking to do, to downtown to help with the revitalization, I have to pay a premium for that space. And it's also some of the oldest buildings downtown. Some of, some of the buildings, everything has, you know, challenges, problems. And the people who are, who own the buildings don't ever want to sell them, but they're not putting any money into them to revitalize them, make them better, make them more leasable. So I, I think we're in a catch 22 in that space and that seems a real challenge. So how is it that the city council can help a small business, cover that gap so that those of us who do want to revitalize the downtown and participate in those efforts in a big way do?
You know, George, we'll start with you because I think you've probably got some experience with this, so.
Well, again, so much is, you know, the city, the government doesn't dictate what the rates for leases are. This is, that's a private, private sector issue. And there's very little that the city should get involved in in terms of setting the rent schedule or whatever downtown. So I don't know that. What's that?
Of course not. Of course not. We would never advocate for the government to get involved in private business like that. But there are some things that the government does to get involved in private business that the city could potentially participate in, like feeder programs or funding for small businesses to make up that gap, maybe six months of, of lease rates. Maybe, you know, some sort of partnership so that there can be some more investment in downtown. And then the businesses can start to revitalize that, move the needle, shift, shift the trajectory.
Well, and, and I wouldn't disagree with that. There could be some initiatives that are taken. You know, we have tried over the years, some, some programs. We did have, unfortunately, we don't have a downtown council. You know, we don't have an advocate directly for, for downtown. But yes, we, we certainly can look at a, you know, again, it's a funding source. It's a funding issue. And is it an unfair balance? Why should we support money for businesses downtown when we don't support it on 33rd Street West? You know, and so you, you have those kinds of discussions and those kinds of concerns. But I've always been a believer that downtown is, is kind of the heart of your, your city. And it's important to go an extra mile to support, you know, downtown. The other thing is if you look at like the Pioneer Place, when I had my deli downtown, you know, a lot of my customers were not downtown businesses. But of course, you know, they were business people that came in. But there were a lot of people that found our place as a destination. Same thing with the Pioneer Place, obviously. If you build it, you build a good attraction. You build something that people want, they'll come regardless of how difficult it is to park or, you know, move around a little. So, so again, I, I, it's really a partnership between the private sector and the public sector. And I agree with Hassan that we do have, and I've been involved in a handful of situations where building permits are taking forever and that's wrong. And that's where the city can do a better job and focus on in terms of making sure that we don't have those kinds of stories. I, I wouldn't be against any kind of initiative that looked at, you know, can we help encourage downtown, you know, storefronts from being full? The other thing is that we have property owners that don't take care of their, their facility, you know, their properties. And I've always been an advocate for making sure that the city staff enforces the ordinances that are on the books to the fullest extent, regardless of where we're at. And, and I've turned in a number of businesses myself, quite frankly, for facades being, you know, in disrepair or, or whatever it might be. And so I've always been a thorn on the staff's side about enforcing the ordinances to the fullest extent. And, and, and again, business owners down, property owners, business owners downtown have an obligation to take care of their own facilities as well. And, and they should do that as well.
Thank you. Hassan, what, do you have specific ideas on how the city can help business owners be downtown? Is in Michelle's question?
I think our downtown is very important, like everyone said. And partnership with the, the city and the private sector to come up with plans. Like I was saying, we need an advisory committee on downtown established. And we don't have that one right now. And I think if we somehow fund downtown, it will not be unfair, I think, to other businesses because our downtown is our heart of this city. And somehow taking care of it so that it is vibrant and welcoming. I don't think it will be unfair to everyone else. But that does not mean we should neglect other businesses. We should work also how to help them as well. But downtown is very important and it's true, it is very difficult to find parking. And many people would not be able to come there if there are businesses unless we also take out, take the infrastructure of downtown into account as well. So I think we can, for example, there's the TIF program that's usually given to people who are remodeling or doing great work, like for example, in the East Side, the Gateway Hotel, former Gateway Hotel is, is getting TIF funding there. So I think whether that will be possible or not, we can look at it. But I think we need to, the city needs to be fully involved in establishing downtown area, working with the businesses there so that businesses feel comfortable. It's very expensive to rent there. Currently, I'm looking for a place to rent for my new restaurant I'm thinking about. But I can't find a place everywhere. It's really too expensive. And it's remodeled and all those. And also I'm thinking about the permit issue at the city, which last time took me a long time. So I think we need to, city needs to be very transparent in how they do their, their, the, the business initiative, how to welcome businesses. We need to be business friendly, not only friendly, but we need to be seen to be friendly so that people know that, oh, in St. Cloud, it's very easy to open a business. Thank you.
Thank you. And Buddy, do you have some final thoughts and, and comments around Michelle's question?
I do. So I think that there are, there are a number of ways that we can, we can try to help with businesses. I, I know that there are tax incentive programs that are out there that are offered to certain owners and certain private sectors that would allow tax incentive breaks for upkeep of their buildings or their space or to remodel the new look facade. I know that those are available. I know that there's a group that meets on a regular basis. I don't know how regular, but it's a regular basis. The St. Cloud Downtown Improvement Group, I think they're called, or something like that. And I know that they have been working on this for a while. I also understand that there are, they haven't been able to come to an agreement. So it's been hard to move the plan forward. And, and I just hope that whoever is part of that group and whoever is in there, that they understand the need for this, for this, this program and understand that, you know, revitalizing our downtown is huge. It is the first step to our new look. I don't have all the answers. I, I don't, I, I look towards others that are experts in this field. I look to have these conversations to see how can and what can we do as a local government to support such issues outside of what I've already researched. So the different tax incentives and these different groups. I just recently learned about the downtown council not being as active right now. And I would hope that that would soon change also and be able to figure out what is it that we can do as a group of public, private and community? How do we all come together and local government leaders and say, how do we put our community back together that where the heart of our city is truly our downtown and the look and feel is truly our downtown?
Thank you. All right, we're going to have one more question, then we'll just go to, to a closing statement that, that I'm going to let you all have. So we've talked about several things today and maybe we've hit on it or not. But tell us what you think the most important city issue is that you would be championing as a city council member? And we'll start with Hassan.
I think the most important thing to me right now is our businesses. They are not doing well because of the COVID-19. And it has affected all level of our lives in many different ways. And it's time for people to sympathize with those who are not doing well, which brings me to the issue of uniting our, our city, making sure our city is welcoming both for visitors and for residents of different backgrounds. And establishing a way where people of different background, skin color, experience interact so that they can bring different ideas into the table so that our city can be a city that is very progressive, well-funded in, in all areas. So I think our, our businesses are very, very important right now. But also make sure our city is a city that is welcoming to everyone. And not only to be welcomed, but to be seen to be welcoming will be a great way. Also, we need to diversify our workforce so that people of different backgrounds, sometimes when they sit together, they do not, the issue of group think disappears. And people bring ideas that has not been seen before, has not been tested before. And that will be an addition to our, our city. And I think it is time for, for people to bring their ideas out and make sure that our city is, is a city that is open and welcoming and is vibrant and economically moving forward. So I think our businesses and the issue of uniting our city is the most important thing for me.
Great, thank you. Buddy, what are your thoughts on that? What will your top priority be? And I, you may have kind of answered it in your first comments, but.
I do. And, and so downtown, I'm sorry, I'm going to cut you off, Theresa.
That's okay.
Downtown is absolutely my, my high, is one of my highest priorities. But, but to mix with that is it's this thing called intersection. And I just believe you can't have one without the other. And the other, the other two that intersects with downtown for me is economic development in the BIPOC community, which is something Hassan has already spoke on. It's just super important that we create a private sector that has businesses of diverse communities involved. It's, it's highly, highly important for our community. But, but even with that, I think it's more important that we get our youth more engaged, period. More engaged with local government, more engaged with our community, more engaged with our city program, just more engaged overall. We have so many programs that are offered to our youth that are not being shared in broader community. There are very select numbers that are there. We, we need to create a, I think, I believe in creating a youth council that would, that would mirror what our, what our local city council looked like, that would mirror what our local committees or subcommittees would look like, where the youth would have a voice, where they would have the opportunity to say, I am, I care about that just as much as you do and here's my opinion on it, right? We, we need to allow them the opportunity to speak so that they know that their voices count. So I would like to create a youth council that would mirror the city council, that would talk about, have discussions around some of the same issues that may, may come up. And maybe allow them to share that with the bigger group or maybe allow them to share that. Maybe it's an, it's an advisory group. I'm not sure what that would look like at, right now. But I think you need these three things in order to be successful. You need a, a very diverse economic population that is growing. You need a group of youth to help lead it so you have a pipeline, ready to do the work, not ready to leave out. And you also need a, a downtown that is working, a business where businesses can prosper, families can be attracted, and the whole program just begins to work together. It's hard to have one without the other. And I, I absolutely understand all the logistical things that, that goes with this. But I think if we don't begin to talk about it, if we don't begin to put it out in the atmosphere, those things begin to stay hidden and we don't begin to grow and we don't move. those things begin to stay hidden, and we don't begin to grow, and we don't move in a way that we normally need to move. Thank you.
Great, thank you. George, what uh what's your priority issue in the coming years?
Well, this is one of those questions where it's never just one thing. You don't just blurt out one word and and you get an answer. To me, the top top issues are are a concern that I have is delivery of essential public services such as public safety, including our police and fire and our inspections department. Safe, clean, potable water, good roads, safe and livable neighborhoods. Economic vitality, including the raise raising the medium household income and reducing the poverty levels are are all issues of importance to me. As a priority, as long as I've been on the council, I always felt it was a major duty of a council member to be a voice for their constituents. I have always uh prided myself as being someone that's approachable and responsive to the concerns of our residents. And I think, uh, you know, we also have to be a strong uh advocate for sound fiscal management of the taxpayers' dollar. Uh, it's a very important duty, and I take that very seriously. I think uh also our neighborhoods, we haven't talked much about our neighborhoods, but our neighborhoods have to be safe, clean, and livable for everyone. And that's no easy task, but it's also a necessary goal. And again, I think I can't underf- oh, restate the the increasing the economic opportunities in this community. Increasing household income and reducing poverty must be priorities as well.
Thank you. Finally, we've got about eight minutes left, so I'm gonna throw this out there to you all. And George, we'll start with you. Um, why should people vote for you on Election Day?
Let's see, why should people vote for me?
Yes.
Because.
You can do a final wrap up, too. This is our final wrap up, so.
Well, um, I would like to say that I'm a hardworking council member. I've always been a nonpartisan, issues-related representative, and I will continue to do so. Um, I always felt that it was important to, as I stated, uh, be a voice for residents of the city, uh residents of Saint Cloud. Somebody accomplishments, just to give you an idea over the years. I was a co-founder with Dave Leopold of the Saint Cloud Area Sustainability Committee. We received an award in recognition from the mayor and the city many years ago. Our city now generates more alternative energy than we consume in our cur- our public buildings. We, I believe, our efforts led the city to be a leader in the state, which is good for our environment and reduces the cost to our taxpayers. I initiated the reorganization, and I had to sell the mayor and my colleagues on the council of reorganizing the HRA and creating the Economic Development Authority. And as I said, ultimately, the creation of the Greater Saint Cloud Economic Development Corporation was founded. The housing, uh, HRA focuses on housing, becoming a HUD designated High Achiever status and improved city delivery of economic development services by making the city a one-stop shop for private, for the private sector. Not perfect, but it's a, I thought it was a step in the right direction. And I think they have some good uh historical, now they've been in existence for about eight, nine years. I think they can uh say some good things. I've been a lead leading advocate for the city's neighborhood best practices efforts over the past eleven years or so, participating in three cycles of committees which identified problems, recommended solutions, giving city staff more tools to combat problem properties, and making our neighborhoods clean, safe, and more livable for our residents. And I've always been a strong advocate and voice to make our city more business friendly, fighting for good turnaround times with our building permits and streamlining private sector interfacing with the city. And sometimes that's a challenge, because we don't have authority as council members. We could only be an advocate for, the mayor has the ultimate authority on on some of those things. But I also pride myself as being approachable to all our residents and being a advocate for sound fiscal spending, independent, again, nonpartisan, and willing to say no when appropriate. I'm hardworking, I do my homework, I ask questions, and I hold the administration accountable to the public. So that that's who I am.
Great, thank you, George.
Sure.
Um, we'll go to Hassan, Yusuf Hassan. Um, why should people vote for you? And just your final wrap up uh comments, please.
Uh, thank you, Teresa. I I think people should vote for me because I am a person who understands our our city a lot. I work with population who are not doing very well, and I can bring their issues into the table, and I can bring the issues of our city into the table. I have been a teacher at Tech High School, so I understand our youth and what they're going through and the difficulties that uh it's happening in their education and in their homes. So I think I would be an advocate for all those young people. I taught at Lincoln Elementary, where we have our youngest people there, so I understand what the parents are going through, what they need. So I I I will be working on affordable housing. We have shortest of housing in our city. So I'll be working with those, so it will be uh uh an an addition to our city. And homelessness is is a big issue, and we need to take care of it. So I make sure that our city has enough housing so that our homeless people have a place to call home for of their own. I wanna work with with businesses. Uh, I wanna work with the police, uh, make sure that we have enough uh community policing programs so our city is safe and uh I mean safe for everyone. So I think I I bring all those issues into our uh city council when, if I'm elected. I am not afraid of asking questions, I'm not afraid of uh speaking the truth when needed. So I am uh, I have been in this community for a long, long time. And uh our city council, I believe, need to reflect our population, our, the people who live in our city. And we are missing a lot of ideas, a lot of different backgrounds. The people who serve in the council, uh, with, I thank them for everything they do. But they have almost similar backgrounds. Uh, they uh they grew up almost in the same uh way, they come from the same background. So I think it's time to bring in and inject new ideas, new backgrounds, new experiences. I have been, I have gone through a war myself, I was a refugee, I have gone through homelessness. I understand uh issues that many of the people who are in the council have not seen, have not gone through. So that will bring uh an idea that uh will make our city more sympathetic to people who are not doing well. So I think I bring all those issues, and it will be an asset, I'll be an asset to our city. I have the ability to the uh resolve conflict, uh, bring people together, uh, back piece. So I think, I thank you so much, Teresa. I thank the chamber for this opportunity, thank you so much, and I wish everyone good luck.
Thank you. And we're gonna wrap it up today with Buddy King. Buddy, why should people vote for you, and you have any final statement you'd like to make?
Thank you, and thank you, Chamber and Teresa, for this opportunity, and to all the candidates for being on here with us. I am a natural leader. It has been, I have been part of the central, I am part of the Central Minnesota Arts Board. I am part of the Great Children's River Museum Board, the NAACP, the Children's Advocacy Center, the, um, I'm a consultant with the school district. I I work in many different areas of this community. Because I am a pastor and in my faith, I am a natural server. It is, it is natural for me to want to help, to want to be a voice, to want to participate and make sure that everybody has the opportunity to enjoy what we would call a fruitful life. I think you should vote for me because it is time to put somebody at the table that's ready to have the real conversations. I think you should vote for me because it's time that the community reflects. The council reflects what the community looks like, like my, like Hassan had already mentioned. I think it's time that you vote for me because I am, I have proven that I can work with others. I have proven that I have, I am part of so many different networks and so many different circles. And I have had the proven record to show that I come with great ideas and I come with great solutions to problems. I don't just bring them up, we solve them. I am a doer, I don't just talk. I'm from Missouri, and our thing is the show me state. So you gotta show me, and that's what I live by, and that's who I am. So thank you for this time, thank you for this opportunity. Um, if you would like to know more about me, which I wasn't able to share, please go to buddykingforstanccloud. That's buddykingfor spelled out F O R saint spelled out S A I N T, saintcloud.com, and you will find all of my information and some of the things that I stand for. And thank you for your time, and I appreciate your vote.
Great, thank you, Buddy. Where at, where at in Missouri are you from?
Kansas City.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, I heard you were down to Oz.
I'm I'm sitting right in Oseage Beach right now, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Yeah. All right, I wanna thank um, thank the candidates for coming. I think we got some great information today, and I'm excited to get that up on our website so more of our members can can review what you had to say this morning. So thank you for joining us. Um, we are changing our Government Affairs meeting to Thursday, the second Thursday of the month, instead of the second Friday, because we have that room tied up every Friday with Chamber Connection now. Through COVID, we're doing that pretty much virtually. So we'll be changing that, notification is going out on that. And we look forward to seeing everybody in November after the election. I'm sure we'll have a lot to talk about. Um, I wanna thank everyone. Bernie, our chair, you have any final comments this morning?
Uh, just to say thank you to all the candidates, good luck to you all. Uh, I truly enjoyed this debate, a lot better than some of the other debates that I've been watching on national TV. Uh, but thank you, and thank you for willing to serve. There's not enough individuals these days that really wanna give up their lives per se to do these kind of things to serve. And I know it's not easy, because people love to point fingers, and we have a lot of anger people these days, but we uh we need to stick together. And I really appreciate to say thank you for serving and willing to serve, and good luck to all of you. Thank you for today.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you all. Thank you, Laura, for for being our in-studio production assistant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Bye.